This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of Killenly Town Council, and we are calling this regular Town Council meeting to order. It is currently seven P M. on Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this point, we're going to move on in the agenda to item two, prayer, and Pastor Jonathan Chapman from Westfield Church is here today.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again. Two brief updates I wanted to share with you. One, an invitation. On October fifteenth, at seven o'clock, Westfield is partnering with the Access Agency to host a community-wide conversation about homelessness in Killenly. No doubt, we've hit an inflection point, and I think we can all agree that it's a challenging circumstance. So we'd love to have you as part of it. It's the goal is to keep it kind of apolitical, start from a place of compassion, talk about what's available, think about what we could do, but I know for a lot of our downtown churches, we've seen an uptick in what people are coming and asking for. And I think we've all noticed just driving around, particularly in the Killenly residents Facebook groups, sort of the conversations going around about people feeling upset at like the Aldi parking lot and other places. So I would love to have you there. That'd be great. And the second thing that's super cool, tomorrow, we're launching a new ministry called Borrowed Blessings, which is a durable medical equipment sharing program. So we have Brown Home Health is going out of business, I guess, and they donated all their leftover stuff to us. And so if you know anybody who needs a walker, or a rollator, or a hospital bed, or a wheelchair, I seriously have like twelve wheelchairs right now. So, uh, super cool. Westfield U C C dot org slash B B is the link directly. You're gonna hear lots about it. But I figured for your constituents in your different districts, if you hear somebody who needs help with those unexpected expenses of a sudden illness, we're very glad to help. There's no expectation. It's free. It's a loaning program, just trying to help folks out the best we can. So with that, thank you for inviting me to pray. Let's pray together. Mighty God, we're grateful to you for all that you've blessed us with even to this very minute. We thank you for these leaders of our community who have such a thankless job. We thank you for their grit and their resolve, their endurance and their perseverance. Give them wisdom to make good decisions, help them to dream big dreams for our community. We pray for our community, divided as it is, for our country, divided as it is, for our world divided as it is. Help us to remember the words of Mother Teresa who said, "If we have no peace, it's because we've forgotten that we belong to each other." Remind us that we're all just walking each other home. Help us to do it with grace and mercy and compassion. We pray this in your holy and everlasting name. Amen. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Gam Batista, who is absent with notification, as well as Ms. George, who's absent with notification, and Ms. Barkley will be joining us whenever she is done. She is actually representing the council during teachers' negotiations this evening. So moving on in the agenda, next item up is item five. I will entertain a motion to adopt items five A, B, C, D, and E, which five A is minutes from special town council meeting July first. Five B is minutes from regular town council meeting July eighth. Five C is minutes from special town council meeting August fifth. Five D is minutes from regular town council meeting August twelfth. And five E is minutes from special town council meeting August fourteenth. Can I get a motion to adopt these?
So moved. Oh, second.
Uh, motion was made by Mr. Whitehead, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion, correction, comments. Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we have one abstention, and that's Mr. Grandowski. Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item six A, presentation, proclamations, and declarations. Six A, proclamation recognizing September eleventh as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the United States endured the worst terrorist attacks in our nation's history, resulting in the tragic loss of nearly three thousand innocent lives in New York City, Washington, D.C., and Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And whereas in the aftermath of these attacks, courageous first responders, emergency workers, and countless ordinary citizens perform acts of heroism, risking and in many cases sacrificing their own lives to save others. And whereas the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one, united our nation in grief, compassion, and resolve, and inspired a renewed spirit of patriotism and service to others. And whereas Patriot Day and the National Day of Service and Remembrance have been established as a time to honor the memory of those we lost, pay tribute to the heroes of that day, and encourage all Americans to engage in acts of kindness and community service. And whereas it is fitting for the residents of the town of Killenly to come together to remember, reflect, and serve, strengthening the bonds of community and honoring the resilience of our nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Killenly Town Council does hereby recognize September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. We call upon all residents to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, moments of silence, and acts of service to others, and tribute to the lives lost, the heroes who responded, and the unity that carried us forward. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this ninth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Next item on the agenda is item six B, proclamation recognizing the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas suicide is a serious public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation with far-reaching emotional, social, and economic consequences. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, C D C, suicide is among the leading causes of death in the United States, and it is a tragedy that impacts people of all ages, races, and backgrounds. And whereas every life lost to suicide represents someone's child, parent, spouse, sibling, friend, or neighbor, and leaves behind loved ones who carry grief and loss. And whereas raising awareness about suicide prevention, reducing stigma surrounding mental health, and increasing access to mental health services can save lives. And whereas organizations such as the National Alliance on Mental Health, N M, N A I, N A M I, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, A F S P, and local mental health agencies work tirelessly to provide resources, education, and support to those in need. And whereas National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in September is an opportunity for the town of Killenly to join with individuals and organizations nationwide to promote hope, share information, and encourage those in need to seek help. And whereas it is essential that our community works together to spread the message that help is available, recovery is possible, and suicide can be prevented. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Killenly Town Council does hereby declare the month of September, two thousand and twenty-five, as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to learn the warning signs of suicide, offer compassion to those struggling, and connect with support services. Killenly Town Council, Jason Anderson, Chairman, dated at Killenly, Connecticut, this ninth day of two thousand and twenty-five. And I would like to add, um, just encourage you to reach out to family, friends, just say hi, call them up, see how they're doing. You never know when someone could really use that phone call, uh, just knowing that other people care and are worried and concerned about them. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item seven, unfinished business, which we have nothing for. So move on to item eight, which is citizen statements and petitions. At this time, if anyone would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. Jean Maufferd, uh, two eight one Bailey Hill Road. I drive down Cranberry Bog probably four times a day, easy. And since Cranberry Bog was paved many years ago, um, I find that the momma turtles in May and June when they're trying to cross that road like they've been doing for so long, and when people come around the corners, they don't see them in time. So I was hoping that as a town that we could come together, and now that they've got those new guardrails, that maybe we could stop putting up some signs as reminders for the people to watch out for the turtles. So, cause I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to be able to drive down that road between May and June and not see a dead female turtle in the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Last call for public comment. I will like to acknowledge we did have a public comment that was submitted by email. This public comment was from Wayne Grenier. And he was expressing concerns over property values, um, at his home due to recent developments. Uh, he is located on Upper Maple Street. And he was referencing the signs that one of the neighbors has. And he was requesting a discussion on reassessment of property values on Upper Maple Street. Um, that if any reassessments or, uh, adjustments to property value are done through the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, and, uh, Mr. Grenier would have to wait until, um, the next, uh, round of, um, assessment appeal period. Did we have anything else submitted by email?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know when that is, Jason? I'm sorry, the next round?
Um, it's, I believe it's springtime is gonna be the next one coming up. Yeah, I believe it is. Um, it's posted on the town's website on the assessors page. Is your microphone?
I did, um, talk to Mr. Grenier this afternoon when he came in to submit that and advised him on the same, same process.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more public comment, we'll move on in the agenda. Uh, next item up is item nine, uh, council and staff comments.
I, one thing popped into my mind, Mr. Chair, um, as you were reading the, um, the suicide prevention awareness. This Saturday up in Putnam is the twentieth Particle Accelerator, um, which is another, um, which is an event that we've had for twenty years, um, to increase awareness to suicide prevention as well. So, um, we have an opportunity to, um, get, I mean, they have resources and, and community resources even there, um, that people should, you know, avail themselves. And it's a great, I mean, they have a lot of music and it's an all-day of music and, um, so it's, it's a good event that everybody's starting at noon time up in Putnam.
Thank you. Mr. Randowski.
Yeah, I want to applaud Jean for coming up to the podium. Um, she's been talking about it during conservation meetings, and it takes a lot of guts, and I gotta hand it to her. You did a good job. Thank you. It's a positive thing. This is not a negative. Everything else is negative, so this is something that we could do and do a good thing.
Do you know how much the signs are? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on you.
No, go ahead. You're.
No, I don't know what I mean about signs. I don't know. There's only like, there's only one sign right there right now, and you like totally forget until you're just about coming around. They'll come around the corner on both sides, and you're just driving it, and you just like, you know, so I think if they have signs further down, people can have time to slow down, react, you know.
Right.
Yeah, the car will move on, hopefully.
You would think, right? I get with you later because I'd be willing to buy the signs if the town would put them up.
Yeah. The, uh, D P W does make their own signs so we can, yes. So, uh, Brian, if you can talk to D P W about, uh, putting together a sign or two, at least one from each direction.
Absolutely.
On that corner. It's a town where I would want to get the state's permission.
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item ten A, Petros Nicholas Kastaris is seeking appointment to the Public Safety Commission. Is there a motion to appoint him? Motion was made by Ms. Murphy.
One second.
Seconded by Mr. Kattula. Discussion?
He's a very interesting character. He came with a lot of enthusiasm. Um, it's, uh, when he first came on, it was a, a little tough. Um, but I think, cause he doesn't understand how this all works. And he's expecting that, like he thinks the, the, our, our constables can just walk up and down Main Street, and that we don't have that many to do that. You know, and we're under the state police, so there's multiple layers that, but at least he, he did come forward. So there's an educational part that goes along with that, so. Well, he would work, I, you know, that's what he's, he's coming forward. I, you know, that's what we need people to come forward, and then they will learn what's going on.
I will say, um, first thing I served on in town was Public Safety Committee. And I knew very little about the Public Safety Committee. I knew quite a bit from experience about public safety itself, having, uh, my time in Montville, working with the, the P D down there. Um, but it was, it was a learning experience, and, and that's, one thing I look at is the willingness to learn, the willingness to come forward and volunteer for the community. Um, and there's a lot of people that have different ideas and different points of view, um, and I won't agree with everyone. Um, but, and my point of view and opinion will be different from others, so I won't hold someone back for that. Um, I am glad, as Mr. Grandowski said, to see people come forward looking to serve. Any other comments? We had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Abstentions or opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Now, the next two items, um, because we have two alternate members who are both seeking appointment to regular member. Um, I'm gonna address items ten B and C simultaneously. We have Jaylee Stokes, who, and also Blair Davis, Jr., who are seeking to switch from an alternate member to a regular member on the Vision Committee. Um, the terms would run, uh, from May first to, excuse me, reading the wrong one. A term would run from September first, two thousand and twenty-five, to December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Um, Ms. Stokes has attended five out of five meetings since being appointed to the committee in June. And Mr. Davis has attended three out of three meetings since being appointed to the committee in July. Vision current, committee currently has one regular member vacancy and one alternate member vacancy. Um, so what I would like to do is open up for a discussion to, um, see if people have a preference over who they would rather see fill this regular member vacancy.
Uh, I'd like to put my two cents in for Jaylee. Um, I've heard that she's really, really enthusiastic, way ahead of the, the curve. And, uh, she did come in first, so although they're both seem lovely candidates, I, I would put my two cents in for Jaylee.
Thank you.
I would do the same thing for Jaylee, only for the fact that, you know, both of them haven't missed any meetings. She's been there every single one, so kind of like a seniority thing. She's been there, you know, longer.
Okay.
I'm in the same boat. Do I make a motion to put her as, uh, the regular member?
Yep, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jaylee Stokes as the regular member of the Vision Committee.
Motion was made by Mr. Kattula, seconded by Ms. Murphy. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I think that seniority, she's been here every day, and she's a seniority, and she did put her application in first. Every, you know, it's, what do you do? What do we do in a situation like this? So, but I think in that respect, she came forward first. She's got more time, so we have to, I think that's still waiting.
Any other discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item eleven A, Board of Education Liaison, and we do not have one this evening. So we'll move on to item eleven B, Borough Council Liaison.
Uh, the borough, um, will not be meeting until next week, um, is our first meeting. And then also on the twentieth, we're meeting with Real Custom Training to do some more, um, planning for the, um, how to develop and promote the, the borough, so.
Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item twelve A, discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to accept the general fund appropriations for town government? Motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Whitehead. Uh, discussion, comments. Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is twelve B, um, which we did not receive a adjusted budget from the Board of Education, so we'll move on further. Next item up is thirteen A, Town Managers Report. Brian, can you go over this, please?
Okay, no? Wasn't expecting that. All right, uh, Connecticut Water Company is gonna be doing some work in the, right away on Route twelve, uh, starting this week, uh, if they haven't already. Um, the work area is gonna be from Town Drive over to Siri Wire Works. They're working on the interconnection for the water system in Killenly, down to Plainfield, and, and then farther points north. Uh, last week, we completed some road paving on Bailey Hill Road. Uh, there's still some work going on in Valleyville Road. And, uh, once that's done, we may circle back to that road after Connecticut Water is done with their project, if time permits in the season. Otherwise, we may take a look at some other road work in the fall that we can do. And then, uh, there's also some paving going on on Spring Street and Oak, Oak Street this week as well. We do have, um, a part-time position posted in the Community Development Department. This was a vacancy from, that was created when Kelly was promoted to Town Clerk. She had a joint position in the Police Department, the Community Development Department. We're not ready to fill the, um, Police Position at this time because we have some people filling in on light duty. So we're gonna proceed with filling this position in the Community Development Department. We have plenty of work in that area due to the construction projects we have ongoing. Um, our Town Clerk also applied for a five thousand dollar digitization grant, um, as it relates to going back into the old records and the land records, getting those digitized. Uh, we received notification that we were awarded two speed feedback signs, which we should receive in the next few weeks, and then we'll work with D P W to get those installed. And I believe the Police Department's thinking of a couple of locations on Maple Street for those. Uh, also, the Police Department received a tier-two accreditation as a Police Department. This is a recognition by the State Police, and they're receiving an award for that tomorrow, but it's a step, um, towards having a independent Police Department. As relates to the sewer moratorium, um, in the last couple of weeks, I met with some of the local Freedom Aid officials to talk offline in preparation for negotiations. We are meeting with corporate and local Freedom Aid officials next week. And, uh, we'll see what kind of progress we can make. In connection with that, we did receive, uh, verbal notification from D E P that we're gonna be awarded our wastewater planning grant. This is the first step in looking at capacity upgrades. It will take into account desired land uses in the town, uh, engage various stakeholders, boards, and commissions on what they wanna see. And then to be good, begin to look at solutions at a high level before we go on to the design phase. So that's, granted, awards about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and it's matched forty-five percent by the town. Um, we have, as you know, we have two construction projects that are linked going on at the schools, the community center, and K M S. Uh, there have been a number of issues with those projects with the contractor, uh, the subcontractor, and some of the work that's been done. There's been discussions in executive session with the Permanent Building Commission. Those are gonna continue. Uh, we expect we'll have a high-level meeting between our attorneys and theirs in the near future, and so there's more to come on that. Fortunately, at this time, our, our construction continues to be pretty intact. Public Works is, is continuing work at the Owen Park Ball Field, and, uh, they put sod down today. It's looking good. The Rec Department and the Library Department has their, uh, fall brochure out, and notably, we have Spooktacular coming up October twenty-fifth. The deadline to register, if you'd like to be in the light parade, is September twenty-first. And, uh, also, uh, we're gonna have coffee with the council and the Board of Ed on September twenty-seventh. That should be done.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Chair.
Any? Yep.
On the, uh, K M S and the community center, um, is the roof all tied in, or do we still have openings in the roof over there? Uh, I don't know how much you can talk about it. It's executive session to some degree, but.
I, I think everybody knows there's a, there's a big hole that was cut in the roof. It's in the wrong spot. It interferes with the main support beam. I mean, it's not open, open, but it's a hole that doesn't belong there. It's not open to the air. It's patched, but it's gonna need to be resolved.
But that's been open for quite a while. That's the, that is.
That's true. Absolutely. It was, it was called for, um, but, uh, well, I don't wanna say more than that in, in open session. It's not our problem. I mean, it's our problem that we have to put up with it, but it's gonna be someone else's problem financially in terms of work to do.
Thank you.
Well, we can't get into the building until that's taken care of. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, that, that, that's another.
Yeah, it's a delay in occupancy.
Okay.
I had a question on the wastewater part that went by pretty quick. So we got, we did actually get a grant for the design phase?
The, yeah, if you wanna call it, uh, like pre-designed planning, D E P refers to it as a planning grant.
So you said one fifty-five thousand was the grant, and then there was something about forty-five?
So it's, the, the budget is three hundred thousand dollars, so we, they pay fifty-five percent, and we match forty-five percent.
I know you had a lot in your report. Um, I just, one thing I, I saw you put in your report, um, that you didn't touch on, and I just wanna, um, bring up for those who are at home listening. Um, it's about the Renters Abatement Program Deadline. There's a deadline coming up for Renters Abatement Program for the elderly and totally disabled. Renter residents who meet certain criteria may be eligible to receive an abatement back on rent paid. The deadline is September thirtieth. The information can be found on the Assessor's portion of the website, or you can contact the Assessor's Office at eight six zero seven seven nine five three two four. Any other comments, questions? Do you have anything further, Brian? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda. Uh, next item up is, uh, W P C A Moratorium Update, which I believe Brian covered during his Town Managers Report. So we'll move on, item fourteen, Unfinished Business for Town Council Action. We have none this evening. So we'll move on to, uh, I will actually entertain a motion to go into executive session, um, for pending litigation with tax appeals before we go into item fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Uh, motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Whitehead, and that would be with the council, the town manager, and the finance director. the town manager, and the finance director. We got a motion and a second to go on executive session.
And if our attorneys happen to be, but if, if they're not, but, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't see anyone on that, so. Alright, um, discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We're going into executive session at seven twenty-nine.